Good afternoon, I'd like to call the meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order for December 2016. Help me start the meeting by honoring our country with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business is our roll call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Slish?
Our visitors this evening include Dick Carter, Shirley, and Benny Cooper, and Roberta Eva Slage.
And I will note for the record the presence of a quorum. The next item on our agenda is the open forum session of the board meeting. The open forum section of the agenda is a time for members of the community to address the board. There will be one open forum session during each regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that event, the chair can limit the amount of time for each speaker. In order to be recognized, individuals must sign in before the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when there are issues that are already being addressed through other established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise reviewed by the college or the board, or on matters that concern individual personnel matters. We have nobody signed up today for the open forum session. Next item is the awards and recognitions. Who's taking charge?
I think I'll take over.
Dr. Sobchak?
We do have several awards and recognitions this evening, and presenting the first one will be Karen Martley. Karen is our Vice President of Continuing Education and Organizational Development. Karen?
I had to get out while Jay would let me out over there. Tonight, I'm honored to recognize Alisa Waldman, who many of you know. She is our Regional Director of the Kansas Small Business Development Center and the Procurement Technical Assistance Center here on campus. And she was honored on November the 30th as one of three honorees in the Kansas City region for the Entrepreneurial Mentor of the Year. And this is part of the Helsberg Entrepreneurial Mentorship Program, which was started by Bernard Helsberg Jr. And he started the program because he was so inspired by the mentoring he received from Mr. Kaufman for over a 25-year period as part of growing his business and leading his business. Alisa, at the ceremony, they did, they had brochures with all the information on the three honorees, as well as they did a big video as well that they had done that was just wonderful. Those of us that were there were just so proud of the way she was honored. But they recognized her not only for all of the thousands of hours she has spent mentoring over 1,100 different clients through the center, but also for her understanding as a small business owner. She has been in private practice as an attorney. She has had her own retail small business, and of course, did consulting here at the center with clients. Many of her clients were there that day, three in particular who nominated her, and they always talk about her in terms of leadership and trust, feedback, coaching, and that she knows me on a personal basis, not just my business. And I see that every day, as many here in the room do, as she works with people here on campus and in the community. So, on behalf of the college, congratulations, Alisa. We are so proud of you for receiving the honor. Greg's giving me the mic. I just want to thank all of you. This honor was really touching because, as Karen mentioned, I was nominated by clients for the work that we've done at the Small Business Development Center. And I think that's the highest honor that we can get, is when our clients and our students recognize us. But it also really helps the college understand the impact that they've made in these businesses and in those business owners' lives. And obviously, an honor like this takes an entire team that allows each of us individually to reach out to these clients. So, I am so appreciative of the Small Business Development Center team, of the leadership from Karen, and our colleagues at Continuing Education, and the collaboration we do throughout the college. So, thank you for your continued support, and it's really been a privilege.
Yet another award here to present. I'd like to call Dr. Randy Weber to the podium. Randy is our VP of Student Success and Engagement.
Well, good evening. It's my privilege this meeting to go ahead and recognize the efforts of one of our students. Earlier this fall, the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees put out kind of an all-call to all the institutions, asking for student submissions for a contest that they were having for videos or posters about why a student may love the community college they attend. It helps KACCt with some of their promotional materials. And so, as part of this all-call, we sent it to our media team, and all students in our media programs were encouraged to apply, or to participate in this competition. The winner received a $100 Amazon gift card, and the second place received a $50 gift card. And one of our students, Nicole Fuentes, was the second-place recipient, and so she was presented yesterday afternoon by the Executive Director of KACCt with her prize. But I wanted to recognize her this evening and take opportunity to show you guys her video, and maybe if you just, let them show the video so you have time to think, and then maybe tell them what inspired your video.
Okay. Off to school. Okay, so I just got to school. Here's the parking lot. I love how it has so many spaces. It's great. It's all around campus, so many parking space. And even like the last one, if you get the last parking space, it's fine because you can just walk. I mean, it's great exercise. Something I really like about Johnson County is the campus. It's wonderful. All the buildings are connected, so if it's really cold outside, or you just don't feel like going outside, I don't know, then you can just walk through all the buildings, and it's really great. It's a great system. I really like it. So, here we go. So now, I'm at Cafe Tempo here at the Rainier Center, and I'm actually meeting here with a friend. Okay, so this is my friend Jillian. I met her at my economics class, and she's a great friend. Something I really like about Johnson County are the people here. They're really nice and caring, and it's just a really great community. Jillian and I are trying to decide where to study. There are a lot of places on campus that are pretty quiet, so we're going to try to decide where we should go. Okay, so now, we're at the CoLab. I love studying here. Something we discovered, there's actually outlets here. That's so cool. There's actually a lot of like outdoor seating outside, so we could even study outside. So, I'm on top of the huge hill that is also one of my favorite places to be on campus. It kind of overlooks all of the buildings. It's a really nice spot to be with friends, and if you want to study, it's pretty quiet, and it's a beautiful day, so why not take advantage of it, right? And this is just kind of an overview of Johnson County. I think it's an amazing school. I'm really happy I came here. Definitely like this community college because of all the friends that I've made, and the professors have been amazing. I've learned so much here, and I think I've definitely grown as a person and a student. And I'm just so grateful to be here, so that is why I like Johnson County Community College. I hope you enjoyed this. Thanks.
All right, so I'm the one that made the video, obviously. Where did this video come from? I mean, it all just came from my heart. This is my day-to-day life, so I thought it'd be a really fun way to show it for this competition, doing it blog-style. So, I've just held out my camera, and it was really easy to do, and I just thought it'd be a really fun thing to do, and it was a great experience, and I really am happy to be here. So, it all is true. It came from the heart, so that's why.
Congratulations. Nicole, tell us where you went to high school and how you got here.
Oh, I went to Alita South, so, and it was just close by. So, I have family that also went to this school, and everyone I talked to, they recommended me to come here, so I did, and I'm really glad I did.
Nicole, who's your instructor?
Mr. Petrie and Mrs. Baumgartner.
And they give you that much leeway that you can just do stuff like that all the time?
They are. They're really nice about us. I got to show off my creativity, so I really liked it.
That's great. Well, thank you. It was wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing off our college and community colleges generally. Appreciate it. I can't figure out how you got second with that grade of video.
It took four students from another institution to beat her.
That figures. Got four to one? All right.
Nicole wears a lot of hats, and as a matter of fact, she's the producer of tonight's board meeting, so we're going to let her run back up to the control room. I make sure this goes off without a hitch.
Thank you, Nicole.
That's my pleasure.
The next award and recognition I want to mention is the fact that we have had for several years now a senator in our midst who has served the state of Kansas in public service. And I understand Senator Baumgartner will now be the Chair of the Senate Education Committee. We're very pleased about that, and we know that there are many challenges this year. Education's a huge part of the current budget and of Kansas' future, so we congratulate you on that, and obviously, this college will do whatever we can to help you in that role. So, I think a round of applause is in. Thank you for your service. The next item, college lobbyist report. Mr. Carter, who will now show a little respect. Dick, please tell us.
Well, you gave my report, Mr. Chairman. I don't normally bring technology with me, but things were happening on the fly today, and I wanted to be able to update you with some information about House chairs as well. When you continue to adjust numbers, you can sometimes get them to where you need them to be, and we are up $1.3 million for the end of the month of November. But don't get too excited. We still have significant issues moving into not only the rest of this fiscal year, but into fiscal year 2018, which is what legislators will be discussing when they return to Topeka on January 9th. I do think we'll see some difference in what the updates look like each month from the Department of Revenue. There's a new Revenue Secretary that's been named. Secretary Jordan will now head up the Governor's Council on Economic Advisers, and Stan Alrich, who used to be with the Governor's Council on Economic Advisers, will move to more of a workforce development position. So, we'll see some change in the way I think those numbers are released each month, maybe even some changes in how we go about figuring out what those numbers look like. So, plan on some changes for that as we move through the rest of this fiscal year and look towards future budgets. There's some shaky ground with respect to what Capers needs for this next fiscal year as we look at how we keep up with that fund. About $177 million is what's going to be needed in this next budget cycle. That replaces the money that wasn't paid into the fourth quarter payment, as well as interest, and then some increased employer contributions that will go into that figure that gets you to that $177. That's a big number, but it's even bigger when you look at the fact that we are nearly $600 million in the hole for FYA '18. Add to that $177 million. There's also going to be some caseload estimates that are off or that need to be increased for social service-type programs, as well as, we don't know what the number is yet from the Supreme Court for the adequate portion of the education budget. So, all of those things combined get you close to $1 billion that we have to find in fiscal year 2018. And that's the budget cycle, as I mentioned, that we'll be talking about. I think the good news is that leadership elections have been completed. It really does look good for the state of Kansas. We have a nice mix of folks representing areas across Kansas, different sides of the political aisle, representing folks in leadership in the state legislature, and I really think that we're going to have some great conversations. They're going to be incredibly difficult conversations, but they will be held this year, and that will be a departure from what has happened the past four to six years or so. Mr. Chairman, you already mentioned that Senator Baumgartner will be Chair of Education. We have some other Johnson County folks who will be chairing committees, or at least participating in leadership roles, or from the area. Senator Tyson, from just south of here, will be Chair of Assessment and Taxation in the Senate. Senator Lynn will continue her chairmanship of the Senate Commerce Committee. Senator Olson will continue his chairmanship of the Utilities Committee. And of course, then we have Senator Denning, who's been elected by his peers as the Senate Majority Leader. And so, it'll be good to have folks that know this area, that are from this area, in leadership positions to help make decisions about this area. Senator Denning has hired some of his staff. I think he's got his staff in place. He's got some good folks there. Some sad news, Representative Kleb is going to bow out after the first part of the session gets underway. He's getting ready to embark on some new things in his life, and so that means we'll have a Central Committee election to fill his spot when he's no longer serving this area. That presented some interesting issues, at least for people that are kind of politically wonky like me, because it was thought that he might chair appropriations or hold some other significant leadership role in the House. That is not to be. And then, by way of further announcement, at least for Johnson County, Stephanie Clayton will serve as your Delegation Chair for this coming legislative session. The House just released their chairs, and I'm looking here very quickly, and I hate to do things on the fly because that's always a recipe for disaster. Not a lot of Johnson County chairs. Representative Esaw will chair House Elections. Representative Sutton will chair the General Government Budget. Let's see here as we move on down. That mostly, I'm saying it again. Representative Campbell will chair the K-12 Education Budget Committee. That's a big one, because they're the ones that are going to come up with the funding formula, and that's all they'll focus on this entire session. We've got some folks in key positions elsewhere. Of course, we have Speaker Reichman. We've got Speaker Pro Tem Schwab. Aaron, Representative Davis, will serve as the Vice Chair of Appropriations. So, we've got folks in great positions in the State House that will help serve Johnson County to the best of their ability. Just a couple of other notes in higher education news. Just late yesterday afternoon or earlier today, it was announced that Annie Tompkins, the former President and CEO of the Board of Regents, will fill in until a permanent president is announced at Fort Hay State University. So, they're in good hands out there. We've begun work on the AACC fly-in in February for the reception that we helped coordinate on behalf of the community colleges in Kansas, and we'll be, once again, doing that on February 14th, Valentine's Day. I can't think of a better way to spend Valentine's Day than with our federally-elected folks. And then finally, we held a reception for the Johnson County delegation last Friday afternoon at the HCA building, and we received very good comments about that event, and I want to thank you personally. Each and every one of you were in attendance at that event. It's very important, and I appreciate your participation. I know that the elected officials do as well. But it was just a great opportunity to relax and have some conversations with those that are elected that represent Johnson County, and we heard good feedback from those that were in attendance, that it was a great type of event that they wanted to be able to participate in. And they didn't dislike the breakfast that we've had in the past where we have those conversations, and we'll continue to do that type of thing. And we'll be doing some one-on-one visits in Topeka with some of the college administration. And then we have Higher Education Day on January 19th. I didn't include that in the report, but there's already work going on behind the scenes with folks here at the college, and we'll be ever-present at the Capitol on that day as well. And so, you may see some additional details that come out about that as things get solidified. I would stop there, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, if there's any questions.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to dwell on this because it would require a long, long answer. But Dick, you mentioned the $1 billion amount for fiscal year '18. Help us understand. It seems to me that we're about $350 million or $357 million short from now till June 30, and then in fiscal year '17, '18, but you jumped to fiscal year '18, '19, I think, if I heard you correctly.
Well, it would be for '18, yeah. Just for '18. We're halfway through '17 right now.
Okay, okay. So, any thought? I know that the legislature is going to have their hands full trying to find $357 million in a year that's almost over with commitments made. So, speak a little bit more to that challenge as it fits into the $1 billion picture you paint. And then if you would, review that repayment of Capers, because I thought that was a little clearer than you described, the high-interest rate, but that that would not be a problem to repay that. But in light of the shortfall in revenue, I guess that's become a problem to repay the Capers fund. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I didn't do the math, and I, again, don't like to do math at the podium. I'll take the last question first. The interest repayment rate was 8%, and I don't know how that was calculated, whether it was on a daily, monthly, annual rate. And I didn't do the math to see if 118 is a representative number of an 8% interest payback on $99 million, or roughly $100 million. The $61 million on top of that that gets you to the $177 figure are going to be increase in employer contributions. And so, whether that is spread out between the employee or those are strictly employer contributions is yet to be seen. And please don't ask me if that also includes the portion that the college might be responsible for. Those are state numbers, and I know that local units of government have their own funding formulas, and I see Judy's not here this evening, and so I don't know. I do not have the answer to that. This just came out earlier this week, yesterday, the day before.
But it was an unfair question. It had a very complicated answer, but it seems to me that that's an issue we really need to track closely.
To answer the first part of your question, I think that the magnification of the current year cuts are frequently overlooked. We responded earlier this budget year to what a 5% budget cut would look like for higher education. I know that internally here, you plan for what an adjustment might look like as you move into your own budget development. But 5% with six months remaining or less, six months or less remaining in a current budget year is not truly a 5% cut. It would be much more significant when you look at the amount that is being pulled away. I don't know what those exact numbers look like, and we've not seen anything proposed yet. The governor is not going to do anything before the legislature returns.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one on the Capers issue, because in your memo, you mentioned that the effect of diminished returns on investments. Now, we've had some pretty good stock market returns, at least in the last month, but we bonded $1 billion or $1.5 billion for Capers two years ago.
One and a half?
One and a half years ago.
No, no, $1.5 billion?
$1.5 billion. I've never seen anybody report on whether we are in fact making more money on our investments than we're paying in interest to the bondholders. It was a calculated risk at the time. Do you have any information about where we are on that?
I don't have the exact numbers on where we're at on that. I do think that the governor hinted earlier this fall that 8% interest payment by the legislature back to that fund looked pretty good compared to some of the returns that we were seeing from Capers investments. That projection process is not terribly different from the other projection processes that we look at when we're trying to figure out the revenue contribution to state.
We have over a year's experience now.
We do.
Where we have sold the bonds at X percent, and we've invested that $1.5 billion and received some percent. But nobody reports on that?
I don't know what the current rate of return is right now, but you mentioning the bonding of about a $1.5 billion figure brings to mind something that I probably should have talked about when we were talking about this $1 billion figure that we're going to be looking for. There's a lot of, we're done pretty much with one-time money that the state can find and the smoke and mirrors, but there are still some things that the budgeteers, as I like to call them, are looking at doing. And one of them is bonding or selling the securitization of the tobacco money, which would be one-time money. Not a great decision in my mind, but I'm not the one flipping the lever. The other thing that they're looking at is tomorrow, the State Finance Council will be meeting to look at the sale of the Kansas Bioscience Authority. Again, other states continue with those types of efforts that are bringing money into their state. We're getting ready to sell ours. The other thing would be the, and this will be controversy as well, is the bonding or the sale of the assets, the unclaimed property assets at the Department of, the Treasurer's Department. Again, there's about $40 million there. So, you can start finding these numbers. It gets a little dangerous and dicey when you start putting them together to figure out where folks might be going.
Yes, Trustee Sharp?
I would add one thing to the unclaimed property. Everyone in this room and everyone watching needs to go to kansascash.com and do a search for your name and all of the names of your family members and friends and neighbors, and even if it's $100, you've got money in there before the state. And I think there's been some legal issues and some legal questions about whether or not the state can actually do that. But before they figure out how to make that happen, go get your money. Thanks.
Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you for that, Trustee Sharp. Those are interesting questions when you field them about money and property. Did Arizona ever buy back its capital, Mr. Carter?
I'm not certain.
They sold it.
I don't know that I can answer that.
Try to fix a budget hole?
A lot of states have budget issues, and they find creative ways to solve those budget issues. I don't purport to be a historian on...
There's no talk of selling the state capital here.
I hope not. We just spent quite a bit fixing it up. It's beautiful.
Thank you for that, Mr. Carter.
All right. Mr. Carter, it appears as though you may earn your money again this year.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Senator Baumgartner.
Condolence.
Chair of Education. You have to work with him. It's going to be a tough year, right? No, we look forward to helping the legislature, however we can, fix some serious holes. So, thank you, Dick, for your work. Collegial steering, we did not have a collegial steering meeting this month. The next item would be the committee report from Human Resources, Trustee Ingram. You have several items tonight.
I do. Thank you very much. The Human Resources Committee met on Monday, December 5th. Ms. Centliver and Mr. Zimmerman provided an overview of the Human Resources 2016 Annual Report. The following categories were presented and discussed. Those included HR Services, HR Initiatives, Compliance and Regulatory Initiatives, Human Resources Demand, Ethics Report Line, Johnson County Community College Committees with an HR Presence, Community Organizations with, JCCC, HR Presence, Benefits Overview, Affordable Care Act, and Other Benefits Initiatives. Regarding the Benefit Plan Renewal, Mr. Zimmerman reported that our benefits consultant firm, Holmes Murphy, has received favorable information from three current vendors regarding benefit renewal plans, indicating no increase in fee premium for ASI Flex and Cigna Dental, and a small increase in short-term disability coverage through standard life. This information will be considered, along with benefit renewals, that will be presented for recommendation in March 2017. Ms. Centliver presented the following policy updates and deletions to be brought forth as recommendations this evening, and with that, we have four recommendations to be voted on this evening. The first is the Policy 410.00 deletion and Policy 411.00 update. The Human Resources Committee has reviewed the recommended consolidation of application of personnel policies and the purpose policy into a single policy titled Application Purpose of Personnel Policies. The combined policy statement includes minor proposed... The combined policy statement includes minor proposed language updates to the policy content for clarification purposes. Regarding the purpose, employees are expected to comply with all applicable Johnson County Community College policies and procedures. The Board of Trustees and Johnson County Community College reserve the right to add to, delete from, alter, amend, or waive the application of employee policies and procedures. The college's policies and procedures are not a contract between employees and JCCC or its board. Any verbal or written assurances that are inconsistent with the college's policies are not binding on the college unless specifically approved by the board. Regarding application, the college's personnel policies and procedures shall apply to all employees unless otherwise stated. If any portion of a policy or procedure is inconsistent with any master agreements with professional employees of the college, the term of the master agreements will control. Except as otherwise specified where these policies refer to a position by its title, this reference to title shall be interpreted to include or his or her designee. If any provision of these policies is found to be inconsistent with the law or is deemed invalid by court with jurisdiction over the college, such provision shall be considered void, but all other provisions shall remain in full force and effect. With these changes in mind, it is a recommendation of the HR Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the amendment and consolidation of the application of personnel policies and purpose policy into a single application and purpose of personnel policies, as is shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation of the administration on consolidation of those two policies. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. The second report is regarding Policy 418.01. It is an update. The Human Resources Committee has reviewed the recommended updates to the job assignments, job audits policy, which includes deletion of language regarding jobs assignments. That was moved into the overtime compensation policy adopted June of 2016. The recommended changes also include updates to the process for requesting a job audit. As the policy related to job assignments, the college shall have the right to make and change job assignments, to establish and modify job classifications, and to establish and amend work rules and workloads. Regarding job audits, a job audit may be submitted as a result of a job restructuring due to vacancy or based on significant market factors impacting college recruitment, retention initiatives. Requests for job audits must be, excuse me, no, 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 must be submitted by a vice president or higher-level employee in order to be processed by Human Resources. Any change recommended as a result of job audit must be authorized by the board approval. The college may retain the services and an external consultant to conduct an overall review of physician classifications, pay system, or the internal audit, job audit process. It is the recommendation of the HR Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the revisions to the job assignments. Job audits policy is shown subsequently in the board packet, and I will move the recommendation forward as a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation of the administration with respect to revisions read by Trustee Ingram. They show up at page three of the board packet on job assignments and job audits policy. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Trustee Ingram, I know these are some longer policies with strikeouts and changes, which makes it hard to read them.
Yes.
If everybody's seen them in the packet, if you just want to summarize them, because I know how hard it is to read.
That'd be super.
A red-line version.
Not a problem. The report on Policy 418.02 update is actually reconfiguring that into a chart, so that makes it a little simpler as well. The Human Resources Committee has also reviewed the recommended modifications to the definition of job classifications policy. The proposed updates bring terminology and definitions of classes of employees at the college up to date with current HR terminology and practices. The proposed modifications to reorganize the policy content in the chart format for clarification purposes. So upon the board's removal, review of those charts, I would bring forward the recommendation. It is the recommendation of the HR Committee, the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the amendments to the definition of job classification policy, as is shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation shown on pages four, on page four of the board packet. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the final report is regarding Policy 418.04 update and Policy 418.05 deletion. The Human Resources Committee has reviewed the recommended updates to the compensation policy and proposed deletion of the temporary reassignment compensation policy. The compensation policy revisions include terminology updates and clarifications regarding the responsibility of the Human Resources Office in making compensation recommendations. And based upon that, it is the recommendation of the HR Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the deletion of the temporary reassignment compensation policy and approve the revisions to the compensation policy, as shown subsequently in the board packet, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the recommendation for the deletion of temporary reassignment compensation policy and the revisions to the compensation policy. And I, just for purposes of, I know the people in this room, I think, understand, or the people watching, we are constantly revising our policies, trying to shorten them, clarify them, simplify them, consolidate them with the good work of people on staff, I think led largely, I'll give Tanya some credit here for, as our general counsel, but that's what we're doing here. So if this feels like and smells like it looks like plumbing, it is. Is there any discussion about our plumbing? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and finally, Dr. Korb provided a review of the fiscal year 16 and fiscal year 17 retirement incentive program. For the two years combined, a total of 57 employees have applied for the program. There are no plans to offer the retirement incentive program in fiscal year 18, and in accordance with the faculty agreement, the early notification incentive award will be returned for bargaining unit employees as outlined in the master agreement. In addition, the early notification award will go back into effect July 1, 2017, as outlined in procedure for all other employees. The notification timeframe will be changed to six months for all eligible non-bargaining unit employees. And finally, Mrs. Centliver, Ms. Centliver, excuse me, distributed the results of exit interviews for the third quarter of 2016, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Trustee Ingram? If not, thank you. We're ready for the report of the Learning Quality Committee. Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met on December 5th, 2016. I participated by phone. The trustee, Sandate, was here, along with Lenora Cook, Deb Elder, Chris Gray, Judy Korb, Barbara Larson, Karen Martley, L. Michael McLeod, Vince Miller, Rick Mooreing, Diane Smothers, who's the recorder, and Melinda Bryan Smith, Mark Van Gorp, and Tanya Wilson. We had several presentations that day with respect to sabbaticals. James Leicher, who's a professor of history and political science, was granted a sabbatical for the fall of 2015 semester to research radical political movements in Kansas during the 1910s and '20s, when southeastern Kansas miners transitioned toward the Klan, and the 1970s and '80s, when western Kansas farmers formed the American Agricultural Movement, a springboard for later anti-government libertarianism. The work resulted in a better understanding of the political culture and how Kansas has been involved in all of the great movements of the 20th century. The sabbatical also resulted in the completion of other research projects that has, had been promised to colleagues and publishers for some time. So Mr. Leicher was thankful for the sabbatical. Samara Hussein presented a sabbatical report. She is the professor of business administration that was granted a sabbatical for the fall of 2015 semester to explore academic industry perspectives in the field of human resource management, enabling the opportunity to infuse international content in the course. The content material developed through the sabbatical project is available for use by other colleagues to improve international awareness in their courses. Suzanne Franklin also presented a sabbatical presentation, and she was granted a sabbatical for the fall of 2015 to study the resiliency, hope, and strengths as related to academically at-risk students. The research will be used to improve retention by creating a variety of pedagogical tools for use in the reading classrooms, the Academic Achievement Center, and the Reading Tutoring Program at JCCC. Future goals include teaching students about their capacity to learn and how to learn, brain-based learning, that the process of learning is more important than the products of learning, grades in particular, and teaching less content to focus on the process of learning and how to provide more practice for their life to come. With respect to monitoring faculty development, Kathy Leffert gave a presentation on proposed sabbatical candidate awards for fiscal year 2018. A faculty peer committee evaluated each applicant, and four faculty sabbatical leave proposals were recommended for approval contingent upon board approval, excuse me, contingent upon availability of suitable replacements for the individuals involved. Criteria used for the selection included personal and professional developments, as well as benefits to individuals, the students, and the college at large. Applicants have been notified, and the sabbatical committee has recommended approval pending official approval by the Board of Trustees, and the Learning Quality Committee agreed to send forward all four recommendations to the Board of Trustees for official approval. The complete list of recipients can be found subsequently in the consent agenda to this board packet. With respect to monitoring engagement process and updates on academic programs, Mike West gave an update, a division update on computing sciences and information technology. Mike is the dean of business and computing sciences and information technology here at the college, gave a PowerPoint presentation highlighting the program areas in CSIT, as well as discussing the current and future trends in the marketplace. And just by my time talking here, it was one of the longest learning quality committees I've ever been a part of. With respect to monitoring learning outcomes, which is a part of the agenda and the overall goal of the Learning Quality Committee, Dr. McLeod, Vice President of Academic Affairs and CAO, presented a new affiliation agreement with Delmar Gardens to provide clinical experience for students enrolled in the health occupations programs, and the agreement was approved by the entire committee. Complete details can be found subsequently in the consent agenda portion of the December 15th board packet. Dr. Judy Korb gave a report with respect to affiliation, cooperation, articulation, reverse transfer agreements. Dr. Korb is our executive vice president and has been involved in instruction and operations, presented two new agreements. The agreement with the Kansas City Degrees, KC Degrees, is a Kansas City Metropolitan Initiative designed to increase the number of students returning to school to complete a post-secondary credential or degree. The second agreement presented is the United Parcel Service, UPS, and it is a partnership agreement allowing eligible UPS employees to enroll in the college classes to be paid by UPS upon successful completion, and the employee will be responsible for any amounts not covered by UPS. So we thank UPS for this, and both agreements were approved by the committee. Complete details can be found subsequently in the consent agenda portion of the December 15th board packet. Mark Van Gorp gave a report with respect to monitoring learning outcomes. Mark is the Chair of the Education Affairs Committee, EA, presented several curriculum changes to the committee. You can see these in the packet here, and the requested modifications will be sent to the full board for approval and can be seen subsequently in the consent agenda portion of the December 15th board packet. I forgot to include the November 7 minutes. They are included in this packet. And, Mr. Chair, unless there's any questions or concerns about anything I raised, that concludes my report.
Questions for Trustee Cross? If not, thank you. That was, sounded like a long meeting with a lot of good stuff.
And I thank Dr. McLeod and all of the staff. I didn't mean to be, I did mean to be a wiseacre, but not directed at anybody. Thank you for putting that together.
Next item is the Management Committee. Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Management Committee met at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, December 7th, here in the boardroom. That information is in your packet on page 24 and runs through 44. We received several reports from staff. This included a report from Dr. Barbara Larson on the estimated timelines for the projects related to our facilities' master plan that we've had many discussions over. Materials related to this report can be found on pages 24 through 27 of your packet. The master plan considered adding the graphics design program currently housed on the third floor of the library into the new arts building. There are many opportunities for students taking graphic arts, graphic design, and fine arts courses to collaborate, as the plan contemplates creating an art district on the east side of the campus, including graphic design with fine arts spaces now housed in the college's AETB buildings will help to facilitate that collaboration. Secondly, the facilities' master plan presented two options for consolidating student resource centers. We've had this discussion at previous board meetings, one that would have resulted in two resource centers, and the other that would have consolidated all five resource centers on the first floor of the library. Following further review and discussion of implications of these alternatives, the administration has determined that the preferred option is to consolidate all resource centers on the first floor of the library, and planning will proceed accordingly. In the second report, Rachel Lear's reported that the 2016 tax levy rates have been published by the county clerk's office. The college's final 2016 tax levy rate for the general fund is 8.938. Capital Outlay Fund is .501, and Special Assessment Fund is .034, for a total of 9.473. The total valuation is approximately $9.3 billion. We had a very informative presentation on auxiliary services from Mitch Borchers, Jay Glatz of Dining Services, and Jennifer Kefir of the bookstore were present. It was really interesting. It was a report that perhaps all of you should have taken the time or could have taken the time to hear. The philosophy of our auxiliary services, as you see them in our treasurer's report, is to break even at the minimum, and yet these are all services in a highly competitive market. But it was clear to us in those reports that the staff is doing a very good job of shifting to market, changes, market forces, particularly in dining, and particularly when we get to the bookstore about how students access and utilize hardbound books today versus online services. We have fewer students on campus with online courses, and there is a greater competition for the textbook industry. But I really well want to compliment both Jennifer and Jay with Mitch on how we're analyzing the trending of how we eat and how we eat and how we study and where we learn and take information from. Mitch also presented, I would say that, by the way, to divert a little bit, the auxiliary enterprise fund is really comprised 60% of the bookstore, 27% of dining services, and 13% of that famous other category. Within the bookstore, books account for 84% of the revenue. Class supplies account for about 7%, technology 4%, and other about 5%. And a lot of effort is being made to study how students purchase books. It was interesting, and I probably don't have that information right in front of me, but we have like 16,000, I believe, 1,600 titles of books that students can use for various courses. Interestingly, the average book now costs $200. We've moved into a rental plan very successfully where students can rent books for the period of time, and I thought that the, it's been a while since I purchased a textbook, and so I had lost track of what that average cost of a textbook is and how costly they can be. In the dining services, 66% of the revenue comes from the food court catering and dining down under. I just had some friends visit Australia, and for the public, we're not referring to dining down under in Australia, but we have a facility here on campus. Coffee bar's about 16%, vending 12%, and Cafe Tempo, which our student referenced earlier as being one of her favorite places, at 6%. And again, anybody that's in the food business knows how competitive restaurant marketing, restaurant purchasing and supply can be on food, and so again, I think our staff is really doing a remarkable job. We get caught up sometimes in revenue and expenditures, and it was very interesting during the report that your college, our college, has participated in a national college food service survey made up of about 100 schools, and these include four-year schools and two-year schools across the country. And going back to 2012, our college has consistently, the survey's broken into overall satisfaction by faculty, students, and staff, and then there is an overall satisfaction by students. And each of those two separate categories, going back to 2012, at least for the students, faculty, and staff, our college is always rated at four in the high fours. It's a five-point scale, and just under five in some categories. It's a five-point scale, and just under five in some categories. And the national average of those other 100 community colleges, or other colleges, both four-year and two-year, are in the mid threes to 3.8. And the student satisfaction, we even do better than the national average, or the national average is down a little bit, lower than the overall of students and faculty and staff, but we continue to be in the fours. So I really want to commend our staff for putting out a quality food at a time when it's very competitive. We had, see where I am here. Mitch presented the sole source report as well as a summary of awarded bids between 25,000 and 100,000. Summary's on page 37 and 38 of the Board Packet. Rex Hayes provided a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and that report begins on page 43. We have a few recommendations this evening, as in human resources, in the process of refining and updating policies. Dr. Larson reviewed, recommended changes to the policy in the Income and Investments section of the college's policy library. The recommended updates serve to reorganize content and bring current, the policy language based on present terminology and financial practices. So therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve deletion of the College Commons Parking Debt Retirement Income Policy and the Fee for Student Activities Policy, and approve modifications to the following policies: auxiliary services, cost per credit hour, deferred payment plan, framework for investments, gifts, grants, and external funds, and taxes and tax rates, and I'll make that motion.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept the recommendation on page 29 of the Board Packet, I'm not going to repeat all that. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no.
Second recommendation is for the Guidelines for Development of the College's Fiscal Year 2017-2018 Budget. These guidelines are published on pages 35 and 36 of the packet. As previously discussed here, the guidelines propose that there be no increase in tuition rates for fiscal year 2017, and no change to the tax levy rate. And while that's our plan now, after hearing Mr. Carter's report and the challenges we have at the state level, we may review those, but currently, that's in our current, in our current plan. Not to raise tuition and not to change the tax levy rate. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the preliminary guidelines for development of the college's fiscal year 2017-2018 budget, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the Guidelines for the 2017-2018 Budget. Is there any discussion? We've talked about this, we talk about this basically constantly, so if not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We have two recommendations based on bids. The first is the renewal of the annual contract for printing of the Continuing Education catalogs. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $174,900 from Henry Wurst Inc. for an annual contract for printing of the Continuing Education catalogs, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the low bid of Henry Wurst Inc. for contract for printing of the Continuing Education catalogs. Is there any discussion? Dr. Cook?
I would comment, Mr. Chair, that occasionally I have people that will respond, you know, we have beautiful publications, and we send those out to a large population of the county, obviously, to market the college. And I know, again, that in our public relations and marketing reports, we're doing more online. So I would just say to the public that we're trending to a blending of online marketing and communications, not just hard copy publications, because there are people that just don't read them when they get them, and I would ask our college to continue to look at labeling because I do get reports sometimes of people getting two copies of the same thing. So we have to always look at our mailing list, but while this may be a large amount, $175,000, they're very well done and they're needed in our blend of how we communicate our coursework to the public.
If I could comment further on that, just real quick.
Trustee Cross.
Appreciate Trustee Cook's comments because I think, number one, I think for the least among us that don't have the money or the opportunity for some of the equipment that we spend so much time with, and maybe for the elderly, it's an opportunity for them to learn about what goes on at the college and see what happens here. So I think he said that, I just wanted, I wanted to hear my voice, so.
Ready for your next item?
Let's call for the vote. I don't think we voted on it yet.
I can't remember.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Yes, aye.
Opposing, no.
Our final recommendation-
This is to approve the, just to clarify, this is to approve the bid for the printing-
Printing, correct.
-of the Continuing Education Catalog.
Correct.
I thought we'd already voted, but I may have been wrong.
I think I exceeded before the vote. But anyway, our final recommendation is for the office and classroom building first-floor restrooms remodel, again, which has been ongoing discussion of our ongoing work in our budget. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $114,689 from Gianco LLC, plus an additional $11,468 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $126,157 for the office and classroom building first-floor restrooms remodel, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the low bid for the renovations to the OCB first-floor restrooms. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item is the Treasurers Report. Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board Packet contains the Treasurers Report for the month ended October 31st, 2016. Some items of note include, at page one of the Treasurers Report, is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. As of October 31st, 33% of the college's fiscal year had expired. An ad valorem property tax distribution of $1,261,183 was received from the county in October and was distributed as follows. $1,189,841 in the general fund, $66,809 in the capital outlay fund, $4,533 in the special assessment fund, to get us to the total of $1.261,183. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of October 31st, 2016, in all funds was $76.9 million, and the expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. It is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the college administration that this board approve the Treasurers Report for the month ended October 31st, 2016, subject to audit. And I so move.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the Treasurers Report, subject to audit. Are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Sapchik, where do the Presidents' Report?
Thank you, Chair Musul. First of all, I'd like to point out the monthly report to the Board, an extraordinary collection of accomplishments and many of the great things that are going on here on our campus. I would like to recognize the Information Services area for the use of photography, first time ever in this report. It's very powerful photography. It's a picture, I believe it says here, the last physical banner storage. It's a color picture of servers. So if you get a chance, I mean, it's very, it's very endearing, and I'd like to commend the creativity. They're actually celebrating migrating 11.4 million, 11.4 million files, and 7.63 terabytes to the Amazon Web Services. I presume that's in the cloud. Is that the Amazon that also sells things? Don't tell me they're also housing all of our data, too?
They're going to take-
That, too? Okay, that's good to know. That's good to know. So buy Amazon. Dr. McLeod, I understand you have some very important guests in the audience, and you'd like to introduce them.
Well, in attendance tonight for the edification of both the Board and the residents of Johnson County are my parents, Shirley and Benny Cooper, who made the trip all the way from Saginaw, Michigan, to endure the blistering cold that is currently whipping across Kansas.
Welcome. Somebody accused you of bringing this from the north.
Would you like to go to the podium and say a few words? No, no, Mickey, Mickey, warn me. Okay, all right. In other words, move the meeting along, is what you're saying, right?
We've been up since five.
The, if you go back to the report to the Board, the first paragraph in here is about our Collaboration Center, and I think one of the most exciting things that we've done on this first floor here is repurpose some space, and that kind of demonstrates to you what we can do with some creativity and investment to come up with something that is kind of inspirational for students and as well as faculty and staff here. So I'd like to welcome the Director of the Collaboration Center, or something affectionately known as COLAB, Kristy McWhort. Kristy?
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Sapchik, for inviting me to give you a very brief presentation. It's really going to be a little photo slideshow of the different activities that we've been doing to give you an update.
Are you going to cover the, some of the numbers that are in here?
I actually, those numbers might be a little different.
Really?
I, you know, we give those about a month before we're-
That's great.
-we're here, but we, I can tell you that, oh, well, let's go back to the beginning here. Okay, we're going backwards through the slideshow.
That's very innovative.
It is. We do things backwards in the COLAB, it's a new thing. Yeah, yeah, I do have numbers. Actually, that's where I'm starting, so thank you for that. Since we opened the semester, and we have not been open an entire semester, but we started opening for events at the end of September, and we opened our doors to student daily use in early October, but in that short time, we've already had 278 different collaborative events and meetings and activities in there, and I'm going to talk just a little bit about that, and that's what I'm going to show you some photos of, because they really run the gamut from presentations and lectures and workshops. We've had a film premiere by some of our collaborative faculty. We've done many different things in there for our students and for the community. Our number of event attendees, we've had 4,700 people attend those events in that time, and the number of students served, and I want to point out that this is really just the number of students who come in on a daily basis and use the space. This is apart from that 4,700 event attendance, so students are attending that, but we just crossed just today the 1,500 mark for daily student use. Students have been in there a lot this week with finals, working together. So let's just get into the photos. This is only the surface, I'm not going to talk about 276 different events today, but we started right out of the gate with a collaborative activity with our arts education area, NASA, the Cosmosphere, and our local school districts with a day-long event. Our marketing and PR and journalism programs did an interdisciplinary collaboration with Alana Muller on a networking workshop for our students that then followed up with this event the very next week, that actually put, allowed our students to put those networking skills in practice with members of our community. So a lot of members from advisory boards, our marketing advisory board in particular, came and worked with our students to help them practice the art of networking. Girls Who Code is a wonderful beloved program, and Angie Sunderland and Sandra Warner do such a wonderful job with that. Every week, every Tuesday night, we have middle and high school girls in the COLAB, about 40, I think, grew, they were able to grow the program from 14 last year to 44 this year in the program, so it's really wonderful. This is an example of a presentation that we had, and this photo is deceiving, it looks like we have maybe 40 people there. We actually had 90 people at this event. This is one where we doubled the expectations, that we were expecting about 40 people to come, 90 showed up for Lieutenant Colonel Ayers from the Command College. We had a Scott Rice Symposium for Innovation in Education with some designers and educators from the area. Scott Rice is who we worked with on designing the COLAB furniture. Our great book series, we've done three of those this fall, we have three more at least coming up in the spring. Dr. McLeod will be speaking at one, I think in April, and that's proving to be very popular as well. Dr. Wright and our Model UN group have been in there every week. Our award-winning Model UN group is finding great work in the COLAB. They're using all of the spaces, they're using all of the technology and having a great time. Our Recording Arts Studio is a great place to show people when you bring anyone in on a tour, and I do encourage you to pop in anytime with anyone, by yourself or with anyone from the community. Dr. Cook, you've done that, thank you. We're always happy to give tours or allow you to show people around, so the Recording Arts Studio is always very impressive, and Mike Moreland and Tom Ranson are happy to talk about that, too. Closing the Global Gap Series is another collaborative event with the International Relations Council of Kansas City. Tom Patterson works really well with them, and we have many advisory board meetings in here, and that's a great outreach effort. We really are so glad that our program areas are bringing their outside partners in for advisory board meetings. We have some weeks where we'll have two or three advisory board meetings at, in a given week. This was a great event. Lori Paldino brought her Comp One students, and they, and she developed a collaborative effort with EAP students. So this was a two-day adventure for them. They came down during class, and the Comp One students interviewed the EAP students, and then they, they worked together, and then they came back and brought the written reports and shared that with the people that they interviewed, and that was really fun. It was great. We loved that, and I think we're going to do that again. I think I saw Lori here. Lori, yeah, you can do it again, right? Idea Jab was a really wonderful entrepreneurial experience for some of our marketing students. Those two gentlemen in that photo, Matt and Alex, are Rockhurst University grads, very young, not much older than many of the students that they were working with in the COLAB to show their entrepreneurial effort for their new Idea Jab card game business, and it's designed to develop innovative ideas. So it's designed to help entrepreneurs and marketers and creatives come up with new ideas, and this was done with our students. They got some feedback from them, and two weeks later launched a Kickstarter campaign. So if you're interested, look for Idea Jab on there. Dr. Broomfield did a wonderful editing workshop with her students and the Kansas City Star food editor Jill Silva, that was in our Learning Studio. Those laptops that you see are ours as well in the COLAB. We have 24 Surface Tablets that students can use when they're in the COLAB and Learning Studio, and they can check those out as well. But this is what we really love, too. Those events are great, the events are, get a lot of recognition, and we've been fortunate to have faculty and staff really embrace those events. But this right here, the student collaboration, is what we love every day in the COLAB. The marker boards have proved to be really popular, there's always somebody working on the wall-to-wall marker boards. The small collaboration spaces are, get reserved by students who want to work together on the technology and the marker boards, and people will just plop down on the comfortable furniture everywhere throughout the space, and it's really great to see just different students come together and put their heads together and have fun. Student and faculty collaboration, too. We have a lot of faculty that come down with students, either for one-on-one meetings or small group meetings. That one of Dr. Liker down there in the bottom was great, he brought down a small group, and they were down there for over an hour, just doing what you're seeing right there, they're having a discussion, and they really seem to enjoy it, and they didn't really have to plan for that, he just said, can we come down, and we said, of course you can, so. So that's my very quick overview, I could go on for hours, but if you have any questions, please let me know, but we try to do our best to tell our story on Twitter, so lots of photos on Twitter, mentions, thanks for retweeting us, Dr. Sapchik, I appreciate that.
You're on Twitter all the time.
Trustee Sharp is great, too. And Trustee Ingram was with us last night for the Capstone Presentations, and as I mentioned last night, that group really, that's our CIS 264 Capstone Projects for the students that are graduating, they work, embodies everything that we're about in the Collaboration Center. It's students collaborating amongst themselves, students collaborating with faculty, and working all semester long with businesses and partners, and in a mentoring relationship to create a real-world project for that experience.
That's terrific. Do we have any questions for Kristy? Sure, Jerry.
Thank you, Dr. Sapchik. Not a question, just a comment. I think as trustees, I've always felt we have a responsibility as a trustee to market in the community, and I believe that how we've utilized this space is a great opportunity to, for you to invite community members to see what's going on in this space. Secondly, and Kristy, I appreciate your leadership there, I also appreciate what I sense to be the interest in the faculty to use these spaces, because I know in one of my visits there, you were sharing that that classroom space gets a lot of requests, and you can't accommodate them all, but I really appreciate the faculty wanting to be in that space and see evidence of that. Thirdly, it's my understanding of the facilities plan, as we look ahead, that we have other spaces like this and hallways, where the magic of the marker boards and making comfortable places for students to engage with faculty, and students with each other and faculty with each other, and so I would just remind the Board that we are planning to facilitate more of these types of spaces, maybe not like the COLAB Center, but this is, to me, a really exciting use of the old culinary space that sat there for a few months. exciting use of the old culinary space that sat there for a few months and went on used the way it could. So, thank you, and I appreciate your leadership to the program.
Thank you for your support and for the faculty's support as well.
And Kristy, thank you for taking this idea and running with it. It's really exciting. It's, the, the numbers are pretty incredible, but what's more important is the energy behind it and all the, the ideas that are coming from it. So, thank you very much. And thank you to the board, too, for approving those, that investment on this project. It's working out quite well. That's terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Briefly, I'm just going to run, take you through a few events of the day, a day that I experienced on December 8th. And on that day, it was, it was fascinating because of so many different areas of this college that I was fortunate enough to experience. For example, I started the day having breakfast with, with several hundred people at the Lathrop Engage, what is it? The Lathrop Engage's Annual Kansas Legislative Forecast Breakfast. It was at the Doubletree. And it was, and some of you were there. It was excellent, an excellent opportunity to hear some legislators talk about their expectations and what they believe they can accomplish this session in Topeka. It was, actually, it was very encouraging. Then I met with President Donnie Wheaton here, our Student Senate President, and he shared with me that the Student Senate's fundraising, their initiative, their fundraising is very successful. And he explained to me how those monies are going to be used to assist other students here at the college in their times of need during the season. Then I got my hair dyed blue because the students did so well raising that money, and, and that was $3,000. And we'd like to thank everyone here who contributed to, to their success. And during that time, I also learned of, up in the student, in the Student Center on the third floor of the Commons, there's a Christmas tree there, kind of a Christmas giving tree, that matched other needs of students along with gifts and gift certificates that they had received. It was very exciting and demonstrated the, the giving nature of our students here. We then had lunch with the Director and another staff member from Sukar Institute of Business Administration from Pakistan. If you recall, we've hosted, I believe, six or seven professors and administrators from the Sukar Business Administration School. We were also joined by two members of the United States State Department who are overseeing that grant. You may know this, because we've spoke of it before, but we are joined with 21 other higher-ed institutions in an initiative that the State Department is doing in Afghanistan and Pakistan, or, excuse me, Pakistan and Afghanistan. We're the only community college engaged in that effort as we work alongside universities from throughout, throughout the United States. We then enjoyed a wonderful holiday tea prepared by our college's catering department. We also had during the holiday tea, burning fireplaces on all of the walls, and remarkably, we have an employee, an employee band that played, which I got there too late, but that must have been really amazing. I think that was a first. We closed the evening with the Overland Park Chamber of Commerce's 2016 Chairman's Reception in our atrium. It's always wonderful to get business leaders and members of our community on campus for that, and we do that a lot here at Johnson County Community College. But there's one thing that I've left out here that was really one of the most inspiring events of the day, and it happened right before lunch when I dropped in on a student research poster session, which was entitled "The Search for Novel Antibiotic Compounds." Whenever I can find an opportunity to visit a poster session on novel antibiotic compounds, I go for it. It was, it was so impressive, and I'd like to thank Dr. Melanie Harvey over there for inviting me in the first place. It was so impressive. And what was really cool about this were the students' presentations, their incredible enthusiasm and what they've accomplished here. It's a, it's a wonderful example of student success on our campus. So, right at that time, I asked Melanie if there's any way we could share some of this success with our students, with the trustees, in a meeting tonight. And Melanie, since it was only a week out, said, "Let me see what I could do," and she came through. So, I want to thank you for this. I'd like to turn this over to you and Dr. Heather Sights, and you can give us a little bit of overview. I normally would love to talk about these types of things, but I thought it would be wiser to let you go ahead for that.
Thank you. Well, my name's Melanie Harvey, and I teach chemistry here at the college. And about two years ago, I started collaborating with Dr. Heather Sights, who teaches microbiology here. We started doing a collaborative research project, and she's been doing this since the beginning with her microbiology students in their laboratory class, so everyone who takes her class is a part of this project. Early on, I started joining in with honor students working on this research project, so it's interdisciplinary, and you'll get, I think you'll get an idea of it when you hear from our students, but basically, it, we, whatever her students' results are, we sort of use that and then move forward with them the next semester with my students. Back in the spring, I basically revamped one of my classes, Chem 140, and turned that lab into, part of that lab, about half of it, we use for the research project. And so, we, both of us have classes where anyone who takes our lab course gets to participate, so they don't have to do like extra stuff or like take an extra credit or independent study to be able to do it. If they take the class, they get to be a part of it. And starting back in the spring, we had our first joint research poster session so that our students could present their results. We also had Jamie Cunningham. She teaches microbiology. She also did this with her class and joined us for last spring and this semester's poster session as well. But we each brought a student, and I just wanted to have Dr. Heather Sights tell you just a little bit about the bigger picture of our project and how it fits into things.
Yes, thank you for the invitation. In my microbiology course, obviously, I have pre-nursing students that are very interested in the future of medicine, and hopefully you guys are all aware that antibiotic resistance is a growing problem, and we definitely need new antibiotic therapies. So, this research project, when I heard about it at a national meeting, felt perfect for my students. We achieved the exact same learning outcomes as we would in a regular microbiology laboratory course, but my students, instead of doing a lab manual where they add this ingredient A to ingredient B and voila, they, they get to experience novel research and research that's meaningful to them. They get to find new antibiotics. So, the, this is part of a national effort called Small World Initiative that's all across the country, includes all institution types. This is the only college in this Kansas or Missouri area that's doing Small World Initiative. And so, I attended some training and brought it back to Johnson County students in fall of 2014. As Melanie said, we do this with our students. They go out and collect samples and find a new and novel antibiotic, but I'll allow Katrina Hinahosa to come and tell you more about that, her research this semester.
This semester, I took microbiology from Dr. Heather Sights, and I learned all about the growing problem that our world is facing with antibiotic resistance due to overuse and misprescription and non-use of antibiotics. We've come to face a growing problem where any, where some pathogens that we take antibiotics for, the antibiotics have failed to combat. So, the pathogen is now adapting and becoming immune to these antibiotics, and they're being rendered useless. So, through the Small World Initiative, the aim of our class has been to try to find new and novel antibiotics from soil samples, from mushrooms, from anything that we could find to help combat this problem. From my own personal experience, Dr. Sights asked me to gather soil, so I went out to my garden and gathered some and brought it back to the lab. From here, we used a method called serial dilution, in which sterile water was mixed with an ounce of the soil and dissolved. We did this a number of times until we had diluted the soil enough to create a countable plate to determine how much bacteria was in our soil samples. After this, we selected individual colonies of bacteria from our plates. We looked for antibiotic secretions which would be visible by areas of inhibition between the colonies. So, on my plate, I found 16 and put them on a patch plate, which was our method of organization. After this, we started to screen them against six new antibiotic-resistant pathogens, which we called escape pathogens. Once we had tested these against the pathogens, we've tried to figure out whether or not our candidates, our bacteria, would inhibit them. If they showed signs of inhibition, we moved them forward to further testing. Some of our successful candidates were sent to DNA sequencing at Yale University. They sent us back sequence data, and through this, we were able to identify the bacteria that we had been growing all semester. So, with this, we were able to learn a little bit more about the properties that it had. We continued to do metabolic tests on our candidates even after identification. We did oxidase tests, catalase tests, mannitol fermentation tests, you name it, we did it. But after this, we are going to send our research and our samples of our candidates to the chemistry lab, and they're going to break it down to further analyze it to determine how it can be of use to us in the future and learn what specific chemical compounds make up these bacteria.
And that's all from, hold on. Wait a minute. Melanie, can we ask, can we ask Katrina some questions?
Yeah.
And that's, and that's all from dirt in your backyard, in your garden?
Yes, sir.
Really? Where did you go to high school?
I'm actually still in high school.
You're really?
I'm a high school student.
Really?
And I'm taking classes here at Johnson County for dual credit.
For dual credit? That's terrific. Is, is there anything up on, is that your board?
Yes, sir, that, that's my research.
Is that, is there anything up there you'd like to point out for our viewing audience?
Well, if you look at images one and two, those are the bacteria that we grew from our serial dilution. And the plate on the right with the squares is the patch plate that I did to organize our colonies. After that, we did screening, which is in image number five, and that is where we determined the area of inhibition and how well our, our candidate inhibited pathogens.
That's terrific.
I get it. Oh, yeah. There have been a lot of parts of board meetings I haven't understood over the last five years. This is the most, I've not understood something, Katrina. Very impressive. I love what you guys are doing in team teaching and collaborating on that, and I love the fact that you're interested in this. That's a serious issue. Anybody that has children and worries about what antibiotics they can use and, or anybody, but it's particularly children, their resistance is, is a problem. So, other questions if Katrina or one of the, our faculty members? Jerry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know better than to press you on this issue, but, and it really isn't maybe related to your research, although you mentioned, I think the word you used were not misprescriptions, but.
Unused.
I was interested in your viewpoint about the difference between overprescriptions and misprescriptions, and what are your thoughts about doctors who really don't like to give antibiotics because they like to treat it naturally, and then the other doctors that really want to do antibiotics? And then my final question is, what do you want to do when you get big?
Well, my opinion on prescription of antibiotics is that a lot of times, the reason that we have this problem with antibiotic resistance is that even though doctors will correctly prescribe an antibiotic to a patient, they sometimes don't finish out the prescription, and this is what allows the pathogen to survive despite that. And if someone just says, "Hey, I have some leftover amoxicillin that you can use for your cold," then they're giving that to someone who might not need it. A doctor does make even a small mistake, then they could prescribe the wrong antibiotic to fight an infection or a disease, and it could prove ineffective, in which case you've just made that pathogen stronger against it.
And so, what do you want to do when you get big?
I'm hoping to study nursing. I'm really grateful for being able to take classes here as a high school student, because when I do go off to, for a university after graduation, I'll have a full year of, of college done. I'll, I'll be all finished with that, and I can start nursing school in my sophomore year.
Thank you for being here, and good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much.
Here we have another student. Trustee Cross, did you have a question you wanted to direct to Katrina, or do you want to wait and save it to the, after the next student? I didn't realize we had another student.
I didn't either. I guess, if I may, for Katrina or Professor Harvey, sometimes I wonder why I listen to NPR, and I think it was sometime this week, there was a hero bug found in a cave. So, I mean, Chair Muzel is smarter than I am. This research helps us sequence existing bacteria so we can find antibiotics to them, is that right?
So, so back to, okay, this is actually a her question, but I can answer it. The bacteria often make compounds as a self-defense. You can, you can correct me if I'm wrong. They make compounds as a self-defense to kill other bacteria, like they're competing. And so, what we can do is look for what are ones that are making something that's keeping others from growing, and then we're looking to try to figure out what are they making? Because that's an antibiotic, right? Because it's keeping another bacteria from growing.
Because they're naturally evolving.
And so, they're naturally making these self-defense molecules, so to speak.
Most common antibiotics that we have today are found from soil microorganisms. So, it makes a natural place to look.
That's what I thought, but thank you for confirming.
Okay, our second student that we brought is Eric Holland, and he was in my Chem 140 class, and he is one of our biotech students. So, Eric.
So, what we were given at the beginning of the organic chemistry course was the culture of bacteria that was grown in the previous semester. And so, I had Panobacillus polymyxia, and we didn't know that, and we just knew it as sample LK8. And it was lovingly grown for us, and we promptly killed it in dry ice and methanol and used ethyl acetate to extract its organic compounds. And we used a method called TLC, which, you have a slide covered in silica. It's a glass slide covered in silica, and you use a non-polar solvent, and it pulls the organics up the slide and separates them into separate bands according to their weight. And once you have that slide, what you can do is have it inoculated by the microbiology department, and it, it'll grow for a week, and you get to see exclusion zones if the bands that it produced on the TLC slide are antibiotic compounds. So, mine did produce an, or it did extract an antibiotic compound, and we actually tried to identify it more precisely by using column TLC, which extracts each band into a separate tube, but we really didn't get it to work as well as we would have liked, so further study needs to be done. But we did grow a more concentrated version, or we did extract a more concentrated version. It's actually the organic compounds and not the bacteria at that point. And it did prove to be an antibiotic the second time around, too. It made a very nice exclusion zone. So, working together, we may really come up with the next novel compound, the next magic bullet.
Right. We have usually had an exclusion zone here for that kind of serious discussion. This is, I mean, this is extremely impressive. And, you know, as with Katrina, Eric, you've done amazing, amazing work that, that is a tribute to you and to our, our faculty. Any other question, any questions for Eric? Oh, Eric, yeah. Where'd you go to high school and what, what would you like to do with your degree here and your ultimate career?
Well, I went to high school down in Blue Valley, and actually, I work in a vaccine lab right now. It's Siva Pharmaceuticals, and we produce vaccines for chickens and various other livestock, but that's not my department.
That's terrific. Round of applause for Eric.
I think this actually goes under the category of not only just what our students are doing that's excellent, but also under the fact that when your grandfather was tired of you crying and told you to rub some dirt on it, he was right.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod. He's always, just so, he's always providing these words of wisdom at every meeting, so I just want to thank you for that. You know, every meeting, we, what you all do is approve so much, you know, so many things, and, and you keep the college running, which is so important. But sometimes we tend to maybe overlook or perhaps take for granted what we're really all about. And that's what we're all about. We're about these students, about our fine faculty, what happens in the classrooms, and obviously, you can see, really great things happen. That's what Johnson, Johnson County Community College stands for. So, thank you. That wraps up report.
Pretty good report. Thank you all. The rest of this is going to seem maniclimactic, I think.
Yeah, it is.
The next, next item on, we have no old business on new business. We had previously, excuse me, circulated to the board a draft, Johnson County Community College Statements of Principles for a legislative package or policy or principles. Was Kate going to present on this?
Kate.
Kate Allen, who is tasked with being our liaison to the legislature in Topeka, if you want to report on this. We're not, don't intend to take any action on this tonight. May consider taking action. May consider taking action on it next month to ratify it after hearing comments.
Everyone received that last week via email. So in addition, the advancement office, in addition, oversight of the foundation has liaison duties to legislative affairs. So I get to work closely with Dick Carter. We have a legislative task force, which Dick sits on and I've got forward here actually together. We have Sonia Chris, John, Dr. Larson helps with that. And we went through in 2016 and tried to look at developing, for what we thought was the first time, some kind of legislative platform. Turns out the college had this several years back in the eighties and in the nineties. Last one we found was 99-2000. It was the last written platform that was adopted and made public. We think because that coincides with Senate Bill 345, which was the lengthy legislation that brought community colleges, I believe it would be a subcategory under Kansas Board of Regions, that the policies were abandoned at that time, we're taking a stab at it again. So unlike other committees or task force, we're not actually asking for a recommendation. We're just asking that you look at this, decide if this is valuable. We realize it may be become fully public on the website, that kind of thing, published piece. It may be something that internally you work from and it's just something that's good to have, so.
Kate, would you like to perhaps take us through some of the highlights?
Absolutely. So the first one is predicated on that key issue of local control. It's such a big issue, there's actually two subcategories below it. The first one being related to education principles, the second one to security and safety issues. They're kind of loosely written, they're really not meant to address purely the 2017 legislative agenda. There may be some enduring principles here that last year over year, but that would be the key first one. Any other comments on that, Dr. Sobchak or Trustee Muzel? I know you've had a chance to look at these a little bit longer than the rest of the...
No, the college has always based its legislative initiatives on local control and this kind of articulates that. But if you see something here, feel free to provide some insights.
Thank you. Definitely a working document, not complete. Second one is related to the partnerships with K-BOR. Then we move into Senate Bill 345. We tried to state our position and then why. On that one, though, we need to probably explain what Senate Bill 345 is. Most readers won't know. That needs to be better explained. It's a hundred-plus page legislation. I needed to summarize it into one sentence if I can. So that's why it's not complete. That's left to do. Below that, the fourth bullet point, Senate Bill 155, that's an example of a career in tech legislative bill that has been supportive and something we support, it's been good for us. We talked about capers there in the sixth bullet point. We addressed the issue of service areas in the seventh, which did come up strongly last year, which I think will remain on the table this coming year. And then there were issues that we talked about related to immigration, continuing ed students, lifelong learners, undocumented students. Do we address this? We kind of ballooned that into that final seventh state point of saying we support access to higher education for everyone in our community. So this needs to be worked on and it has, needs to have your input, but it's a starting point. And our task force stands ready to make revisions, do whatever you all deem is necessary to move forward with this or not, if that's the choice of the committee. And I don't know if committee members or Dick Carter, anything, Dr. Larson, anything to add to that? Thank you for all your support to help create this.
You've had this in your hands for about a week or two. If you have any specific comments you want to add today, I think this would be appropriate. And then I also think if you want to share those with Kate so she can bring back some consolidated issues or ideas for next month. I am a supporter of having a statement of principle so that when the president goes up or when Kate goes up or when Dick goes up and talks to legislators, they see that there is a statement of broad principles that we are asking the legislature to consider and yet be have enough flexibility that we're not tying ourselves down to a specific -- we don't know what bills are going to happen or what committees hearings are going to be held or what will happen in the last days of the legislature. But we ought to have, in my opinion, some basic principles that say, here are the things that we think are important to the future of Johnson County Community College. Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also say that it's a statement of position by all trustees. So I think as you look at these positions, if you have issues with any of them, we need to vet them before they're published, not necessarily tonight. But I would hope that as we have a college position, that we as trustees can support that when we're in the marketplace as well, including the State House.
Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly appreciate this list and I have no problem with this list. With respect to any specific points or bills that may arise, as always, I reserve the right to, you know, the First Amendment right to speak out. So with respect to Trustee Cook's point about this be a statement on behalf of all trustees, again, I have no problem with this specific statements of principles as I read it here tonight.[959.00][959.00](APPLAUSE). Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, I think we'll, you get together, you haven't heard much comment, but see if there are, if you have anything, please try to get them to Kate before the holidays so that we can then readdress this at our January meeting. Okay. Anything, Dr. Sobchak?
No, that's terrific. I think the last time we did this was, what, 16 years ago?
Right. That was what our records show, 1999-2000.
Right. So it's probably high time that we resurrect this approach and certainly provide some disciplines for us, I think, in Topeka.
Thank you, Kate. We'll move on the agenda to our report from board liaisons and the first one is Dr. Arjo on behalf of the Faculty Association. Dennis, welcome to the podium.
Okay, well, thank you. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. Couple of things I was going to talk about tonight. One is, you'll recall at the last meeting, I presented a statement on behalf of the Faculty Association regarding what I called inclusion. I think the actual title referenced protecting vulnerable populations. So this was in response to some of the tensions that were lingering after the presidential election. And we were asking for a general affirmation of the college's longstanding anti-discrimination policies. And I was very happy with the response that got at that board meeting. I felt there was a strong affirmation of just that. We left that up on our Google site, asking faculty both full-time and part-time to add their names to this statement and quite a number did. And so I sent that by email to all of the board members this afternoon and I presented to Trustee Muzel a hard copy as our kind of official presentation of that statement. I see this as an ongoing initiative. I hope and expect the faculty will continue to look for opportunities to build a culture and environment here where we can acknowledge our disagreements across the political spectrum and other fashions while engaging difficult educational topics. I teach ethics. Every semester I assign readings I know are going to annoy people on the one side of the political spectrum and then I assign readings that I know will annoy the other side. And I think this is the kind of educational environment we need to have where we can do this and acknowledge disagreements but still be civil and accepting. The second thing I wanted to mention, we had our general membership meeting on Monday. It was a rather robust turnout for a Monday, first week of finals. And I suspect that had to do with the one, at least in part, one particular agenda item, which is what we've come to start to refer to as the 30% rule. So this was an agreement that came out of the long, ongoing engagement conversation initiated by Dr. Korbe. The agreement was to have the deans use their scheduling authority to make sure that all full-time faculty teach 30% of their course load in face-to-face classes so that they will be on campus. So this is part of a commitment to the physical campus, to the physical community of Johnson County, to make sure faculty, full-time faculty really are here and engaging students, talking to each other, talking to administration, talking to staff, and so on. I have to say, I was expecting a bit more of a response to this in general. It's been rather quiet. I've not gotten too much from the faculty. We did have a pretty robust and interesting conversation at the meeting. So some of the concerns I've heard about this 30% rule have to do with particular scheduling complications that some faculty might be facing. There's some questions, I think legitimate, important questions that we need to keep talking about as to how we're going to balance online versus face-to-face teaching. Online enrollment continues to grow. It's becoming a very important part of our overall enrollment numbers. We certainly want to build on those strengths and that demand. At the same time, I think there's a growing recognition, we don't want to lose sight of what kind of institution this is and has been since its inception. As an institution, that is part of an actual community located in a specific geographic place, this Johnson County Community College. So we will see how this new policy or new practice is implemented, how it works out. We will keep an eye on some of the scheduling complexities that are beginning to emerge as we actually go forward. But that, too, is an ongoing conversation that I think we need and I look forward to. I will take any questions if they're already.
Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, the two topics, the first one, how do we disagree agreeably kind of and hear different viewpoints? And then the second, on the 30% rule. I guess my question would only be, I'm always interested in the process. Are you comfortable that the dialogue process is efficient and appropriate? And...
I am. I mean, I was part of it. There were several, some of our longest-term faculty were part of that conversation. I think it was constructive. There's, you know, it's a complex issue. There's a lot going on there, a question about what can be done without getting into the master agreements when it comes to scheduling faculty. There's some sensitivities that we, you know, they're still there. So I think this is, I see this as one component of a broader conversation that we're going to continue to need to have. Thank you.
And there's always Aristotle.
There is always Aristotle.
What happens there, so.
I've been reminding myself.
I remember.
Yes.[1299.63][1299.63](LAUGHTER).
I don't see any other questions. Thank you. And those are two important topics. I appreciate seeing this. By my calculation, approximately 120-plus faculty names are on there, about 15 a page, so that's a good response. All right. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Next report would be for the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. That is Dr. or Trustee Lindstrom, who, again today, because of the rescheduling of his meeting with the Kansas Turnpike Authority Board where he chairs, he could not be with us today. And there's been no J-Cert meeting since our last board meeting here. However, he did want to report that the Johnson County sales tax for November was up 7.37% over last year's November. So that means more money flowing into the J-Cert coffers for the three institutions if that is supported. The next item then is the report from the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Weber and I had the privilege and honor to travel to Parsons, Kansas on Sunday and Monday, December 4 and 5 for our quarterly meeting at LaBette Community College. We had a nice presentation on Title IX and I again want to commend as we go through our audit process and what we're doing with all of the Title IX intricacies, that I really feel good about how we're doing compared to what the report was and where we should be on Title IX. Scott Smathers is the Vice President for Workforce Development for the Kansas Board of Regions. He made a presentation as to how K-BOR wants to reach out to the colleges and help with workforce development. So I assume, Karen, that you're going to be involved with Scott at that particular level. We had some interesting discussions about the merger between Wichita State University and Tech School in Wichita. And I think the state association is not opposed to mergers. The report earlier was made by Senate Bill 155, those funds. We are concerned about how they might be re-centered or reutilized to support this merger. We find it interesting that when Washburn merged, they levied a local tax to help facilitate that process. I suppose it's somewhat, Dr. Sobchak, like our research triangle, we chose in Johnson County to have a quarter cent sales tax to advance certain educational opportunities between K-State and KU. And so I think some of us feel that maybe if Wichita wants to have this merger, that they could levy a local tax to help support that merger if that's what they want. But we continue to have those discussions and I think the Board of Regents met Wednesday and I didn't hear or know what the result of that, yesterday, what the result of that was. You...
No, I was going to suggest that perhaps you could go to Wichita and make that recommendation to them.[1474.08][1474.08](LAUGHTER).
Well, I wouldn't be opposed to doing that. We also talked about January 19th is going to be Education Day at the Capitol where all the higher institutions of learning will convene to tell their story. Our next meeting will be, our state meeting will be PTK in February in Wichita when we recognize our Phi Theta Kappa students and that's always a really, really nice luncheon. Mr. Carter mentioned the National Legislative Summit that's coming up in February and a number of the colleges will be attending that to address our federal representatives. So I think KACC continues to be concerned about funding at the state level and we'll continue to monitor and see how that works. So that concludes my report. Mr. Weber was a terrific pilot and it's interesting that as we walked around, everybody knew Dr. Weber and particularly Allen County Community College folks were asking about him. So thank you.
Questions? Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to congratulate my, I have a couple of credits from Garden City Community College and I want to congratulate the Bronxbusters for the National Junior College Athletic Association football championships this year where they are undefeated. So I'm sure that that probably came up in the meeting. They're a little bit proud of that. So I just want to congratulate GCCC.
We are also undefeated in football this year at Johnson County Community College. So I don't think it's that big a deal.[1576.33][1576.33](LAUGHTER). But thank you for bringing that up.
The Bronxbusters.
Mr. Chair, our insurance premiums are cheaper.
Let's go to the foundation report from Trustee Ingram.
That's fine. Thank you. Earlier this year, the foundation received a gift agreement for nearly $150,000 to purchase a new Steinway piano for the Performing Arts Series. The new Steinway has arrived from New York and will be debuted on Wednesday, December 21st by Juilliard student Che Young Park in the Polsky Theater at 7:00 PM. We would like to thank donor Peter Goulet for bringing this magnificent instrument to Johnson County Community College. It will enhance the Performing Arts Series for many years to come. The Foundation Board Development Committee will meet after the first of the year to evaluate the candidates for the 2017-2018 board slate. The foundation is also currently accepting nominations for the 2017 Johnson Countyan of the Year. The intent of this award is to recognize someone who has made significant contributions to the Johnson County community and Johnson County Community College. Nominations are due to the foundation by January 15th and a selection committee will review all submissions. Recommendations can be brought to the foundation office or given directly to Kate Allen. The foundation would like to close by thanking the trustees and cabinet members for their efforts this year to make 2016 a successful year. They wish everyone a wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Another great year for the foundation. I know others of you have been to Yardley Hall since the renovation and I was there for the Ukulele Orchestra of Great Britain, which I highly recommend. It was almost sold out again this year, but I watched the upper tier where we put in the handrails because of a generous donation from a lady that saw that need and then after she passed, increased her donation. And it was great to watch people use that because we have a lot of people, there were a lot of older people at that event, almost my age, who used those rails. And I think it's a great addition, so I'm very plen-- Emily's not here tonight, but it was a great addition to the facility. We're done with our liaison reports. The next thing is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a list of items, routine items that have been reviewed by committees. They're routine and consensus items typically considered in one motion and debated and passed in a single vote. Any member of the board can remove an item and have it debated and voted on separately. Are there any items any board member sees in tonight's consent agenda that you would like to pull and consider separately? If not, accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those no, motion carries unanimously. No executive session? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Those no, motion carried. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. We are adjourned.[1767.86][1767.86](APPLAUSE).[1768.86]